Okay, we are here in the Commissioners Ballroom.
One more chance.
This is not the Commissioners Ballroom. This is the Senator Hearing Room. The Commissioners Ballroom is upstairs. It's actually the Commissioners Boardroom that I have misread many times during my chairmanship this year, and I'm going to get the next Chair to read it that way. Well, welcome. We're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, December 28, 2016. It is my last session that I get to chair over, and I would like to have everybody join me. We'll start it with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My ice pack fell down.
Tell, explain this to everybody before they ask.
I've got an ice pack in my back because I, oh, many, many years ago herniated a disc, and this is the second time during my workout that I deadlifted a little too much weight and hurt my back on Monday, so I'm slowly recovering, getting better. It is Wednesday, December 28. We are in Courthouse Square here in the Senator Hearing Room, and we have one person signed up for public comment this morning, Pete Dane. If you would like to come over to the side, and welcome, and introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Pete Dane. I live at 720 Capital Street in Salem, and I'd like to make a recommendation for a pay raise for the meritorious work of the County Clerk Bill Burgess. With the new year a few days away, I encourage the county commissioners to set a few goals for county employees in 2017. It's hoped that the merit system can be promoted to encourage employees to take a little more pride in doing better work. Among the 36 counties in Oregon, workload is very widely. Ironically, the pay scale is often the same. Marion County Compensation Board sets wages based on what other counties are paying their employees. Ironically, this doesn't make for a level playing field. Many employees end up doing a lot more work than ones from adjoining counties yet are paid the same wage. Most of them go the extra mile because they like to get the work done right. Marion County is one of the larger counties in Oregon in terms of size, population, and commerce. One of the model employees here is the County Clerk Bill Burgess. His management during the recent elections was exemplary. Despite the formal logistics of maintaining voting standards across a large county, especially during a contentious election, Mr. Burgess maintained excellent quality control and announced accurate election results on schedule. Ironically, for all of his marvelous work, he gets the same pay as a county clerk from smaller counties. Somehow, the merit system has let him down. It would be ideal in 2017 if Mr. Burgess was given a pay raise. His astute management saves the county money because his staff works more efficiently and accurately. His office is a good role model for other departments. Perhaps the Marion County Compensation Board should be directed to test the occasional phasing in of salary raises for outstanding employees. This might reinforce the merit system, boost production morale and efficiency. It can improve the already good services for business and residents. Thank you for making Marion County a better place to live and work. Do you have any questions or comments?
Good. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move into our consent calendar and...
I don't know whose turn it is, but I'll relish this one last opportunity.
All right.
And it's short. Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. Under Board of Commissioners, we approve an order establishing the Board Committee and Commission Appointments for Marion County Elected Officials. Business Services, approve a recommendation to adjust upward salary ranges for juvenile relief worker, Alternative Programs Number 153, Juvenile Relief Worker Detention 156, Juvenile Relief Worker Gap 157, and Juvenile Relief Worker Probation Number 218. In the Clerk's Office, we approve an order appointing Paul Allen, Gerald Bellman, Micah Moskowitz, Valerie Palmer, Bob Riggy, Jennifer Sososki, Sue Thompson, Jack Yarborough to the Board of Property Tax Appeals, known as BOPTA, with terms ending June 30, 2017.
I'll second the motion and just point out that the salary adjustments were part of our discussions that we had with the contract with the juvenile workers, and I'm happy to see that coming forward as quickly as it did.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. So, the next one, I'm not sure the Chair will allow to come forward, under action of the Board of Commissioners. Yeah, I thought I was elected Chair for life, but I guess somebody lied to me.
Now, you go to Clackamas County and try that, but then you're...
No, I don't think so. I'd rather be second Vice Chair right here than go to Clackamas County. I'll be nobody here before I'd go there. So, under Board of Commissioners, consider approval of an order appointing Sam Rantano as Chair, Janet Carlson as Vice Chair, and Kevin Cameron as second Vice Chair, also known as Can't Do Anything because the other two aren't here, Vice Chair of the Marion County Board of Commissioners. John, it has your name by it, so you get the distinct pleasure of explaining this action item.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah. Still, call me that.
Well, you're still the Chair. You notice this doesn't take effect until next year. I get it. Okay. One of the things that has always been very fruitful for me about this board is that you don't get involved in partisan wrangling about who should run the board and who should set the agenda, and I think that has meant, at least for the 13 years I've been here, a very steady course for the county. And so, it's been the tradition of Marion County for the Board members to rotate the chairmanship to make sure that there's no problem with someone taking over forever, Mr. Chair. And I think it really has done well for the county because we've not seen issues come up over who's Chair and what that means for a really good working relationship among the Board members. So, I think this is an important thing we do every year. Thank you for your service.
Okay. And all teasing aside, I agree with you 100%. And my, this is my, I guess, third year. I got here half of a year through, and you were Chair at that point in time, and then you chaired last year, and then I got to Chair this year. And I appreciate the rotation, and giving me an extra year before I had to jump in here was great. I still haven't reached perfection, though. That's the problem.
You were real close last time.
So, I may, I'll have to wait two or more years, and then I'll get another chance to reach perfection, so.
I would say this, Kevin, and all kidding aside, you've done an excellent job. The county's run well, the meetings are organized. I know the extra work it takes, and you've done, even want to continue. I could see it in your voice and your Facebook posts, but you have done a great job.
Yeah. Well, we have a great staff that makes everything roll. I wouldn't say that there's a tremendous amount of extra time, but it's great to have all the staff that's probably watching and listening and that makes this thing roll on time and does really good work to help us get here on Wednesdays and have these things come together, so. Good.
I just want to add my thank you for your service this year as Chair, and you did an absolutely outstanding job. I'd say this every year, but just for people that maybe don't remember 12 months ago when we talked about this, being a Chair on the Board of Commissioners in Marion County at least is a bit different than being a Chair of a Legislative Committee. Legislative Committee Chairs really kind of get to decide what happens and what doesn't happen, you know, pick the bill, set the agenda, but with the way that we operate in Marion County, it's very much a collaborative operation of the three Commissioners working together. So, it's much more a ministerial type of responsibility. There are documents that the Chair signs that the other Commissioners don't, you know, we have certain personnel documents and so on that it just gets delegated to the Chair. The Chair becomes the spokesperson to the media the year that he or she is Chair, and for the most part, although there are times when we speak to the media as well, but you know, there has to be a point person. And then I made the joke before it started, but the mail starts with the Chair, so that's where the extra work comes in because you kind of have to sort through and figure out, all right, does this really belong in the pink folder? Is this something everybody, you know, like, should be getting right away, or those types of things? And so, it's not a power position in a sense, but certainly it gives a Commissioner the opportunity to kind of set the tone and, you know, like the retreats and things, the retreat this year that we had and those types of things, strategic planning, those are the types of things as Chair that you can kind of take the lead on and get rolling. So, again, want to thank you for the work that you did this year as Chair, and we very much enjoy working with you.
My honor. So, we need a motion to make you Chair.
I will make that motion. I will, Mr. Chair, I will move that the Board approve an order appointing Sam Rantano as Chair, Janet Carlson as Vice Chair, and Kevin Cameron as second Vice Chair of the Marion County Board of Commissioners.
You will send the crown along, won't you?
Mm-hmm. The gavel right here, I got it in my hand.
I'll second the motion. One thing I just want to comment on, you've done a great job, and the county's been very productive, as I said, so I don't want people thinking, oh, good Commissioner Rantano's back, it's a year off, because I plan to revitalize myself and the county, so I'm hoping for as successful a year as you had.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? The only thing I would say is Commissioner Carlson just blew my, burst my bubble because she said it wasn't a powerful position, and I thought it was powerful all year, so...
You were not powerful.
It wasn't about me. And the other thing was that we never, we never had any highly controversial issues that I had to go before the press on. I mean, we talked marijuana and some other things.
We still haven't solved the tow truck thing. It still troubles me.
Yeah, well, that'll be coming. We're still going to work on that one, so we've got a few issues out there we're working on next year, into next year, but it was, it was very, very calm, pretty much, from that standpoint, and I think that's a result of the way this county's run. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right.
Sorry.
That's good. Okay, we are here. Next action item is Public Works. Brandon, good morning, welcome. Receive an order and consider appeals. Receive and consider appeal of hearings officer's decision denying partition P case number 16-014 slash Kaufman, Clerk's File Number 5719.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, this is Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The item before you today is an appeal of a hearings officer's decision denying a partition request to divide a nine-acre parcel in an acreage residential zone into three parcels. The request was approved by the Planning Director, subject to certain conditions. The applicant disagreed with two of the conditions and appealed that decision to the hearings officer. The conditions that were appealed required right-of-way dedication and improvements of a local access road, Canyon Street Southeast, that serves the proposed parcels. The hearings officer held a public hearing on October 26, 2016, and on December 7, 2016, issued a decision denying the partition request. In finding 11 on page 7, the hearings officer discusses the right-of-way width of Canyon Street and concludes that a 60-foot right-of-way already exists and no additional dedication is necessary. In findings 34 and 36, beginning on page 13, the hearings officer discusses the required improvements to the local access road and concludes that there are no adopted local access road development standards that can be applied, and no provisions tying local access road standards to other county road standards. In the denial, the hearings officer found that the applicant needed to provide additional information on how the properties will be accessed, including if it will be feasible to meet sight distance and slope standards and to manage storm water. Without specific information on the proposed access, it could not be determined that there is adequate access to the parcels. The hearings officer concluded that the applicant did not meet the burden of proving all applicable standards and criteria were met and denied the request. In the grounds for appeal before you, the applicant identifies three items. First, the hearings officer applied the incorrect standard for review by conducting a de novo hearing, and in doing so, erred and reversing the tentative partition approval issued by the Planning Director when the sole basis for the appeal was a challenge to the constitutionality of two conditions of approval. Secondly, the applicant intends to submit additional evidence regarding access, stormwater, and road grade standards for consideration by the Board if the appeal is accepted and a hearing is held. Finally, the applicant agrees with the hearings officer that there is no adequate basis to require the abutting local access road to be developed to county standards because no specific standards for local access road have been defined. Today, the Board has the options of accepting the appeal and remanding the matter back to the hearings officer, accepting the appeal and scheduling a public hearing, the suggested hearing date is January 18, 2017, or deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision denying the request. The applicant has agreed to grant an extension to the 150-day decision-making deadline if the appeal is accepted. Staff recommends that the Board accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing for January 18, 2017. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions I can.
Yes, Commissioner.
Brandon, you just went over that, but I'm just trying to... So, a local access road is essentially just a driveway and it's private property. Is that what it is? Is that why there are no standards? Or is it something we haven't taken care of, and we should have in Marion County?
My understanding is a local road is just the minimum level of road. It can still be a public road, it's just a, the roads go something like a local collector, arterial, and et cetera, but the local road is just a real minimal level of road that just serves access to properties. It's kind of like a step above a driveway, but it serves multiple properties.
So, should we have some standard on it? There's some talk of right-of-way, but I don't think this local access is in a right-of-way. Is that how it is?
I think the standards for a local access road should come through the county's Transportation System Plan, and so that'd be something that we'd...
Need to work on.
The Board would work with Public Works on to develop standards. There are so many local access roads in the county.
It'd be a can of worms because certainly they've been, a lot of them have been in place for a long time in various conditions and design, I guess, or lack of design.
There are. The ideal is to have a 60-foot right-of-way for a local access road, but unless you're developing the road newly, like a subdivision newly today, it's unlikely to have that whole section developed. And even if it's rural, it's still unlikely, say, to have, maybe have sidewalks, maybe just to have a pavement and a shoulder, but maybe not sidewalks even.
If we don't have rules in place, I'm assuming there is a rule in place where it does join a county road, and that would be a key thing we'd want to look at here.
Sure.
To make sure it can...
Find out that connection between...
Connection itself can stand some higher traffic. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions there, Commissioner?
I do.
Go ahead.
But...
What? Do you want me to go first?
So, our purpose today is just to determine whether we're going to accept the appeal, correct?
That's correct.
And schedule a public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing.
Right, so, and I read through this last night, and I don't want to debate any of the merits of the different arguments that are being made, except I just have one question, and again, without, maybe I just need to reserve this for the, for the hearing itself. But I was maybe a little bit concerned about the part about the de novo hearings, and so this is a question I actually wanted to ask Gloria. Was there something about this particular hearing that was different than the other hearings that we've held? And so, if a Planning Director says, well, I'm going to go ahead and approve, you know, this based on these things, and then it gets, goes to the hearings officer, everything that's in the file from the Planning Director is given to the hearings officer, but if things aren't in the file, then I'm trying to understand how you distinguish de novo hearings from the process that we're using, or if we do.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it's a little bit unusual because there hasn't been a hearing, there's been a Planning Director decision. So, this is really the first hearing before the hearings officer? And to the extent that that argument is relevant, one of the issues was that there was certain information that the hearings officer found missing that would have precluded an approval, and that information, should you accept the appeal, could be provided, in which case, whether it's a de novo hearing or not, might be mooted out.
Right, right, okay. I just wondered whether or not, if this isn't different than the way we've done the hearings for the last 14 years that I've been here, you know, is there something, when they're saying that we're not legally presenting hearings, I want to, I just want to be prepared to be able to discuss that a little bit when we have the hearing.
Right, and we'll go back and confirm that, both in the code and as well as any kind of statutory authority that might be...
So, I spoke with County Council on this before, when this, when I saw the, when I saw the appeal, and in the subdivision partition ordinance, it says that appeals are conducted in the way, the manner that they are in the Conditional Use Chapter, specifically 17119150, and that language there states that a public hearing before the hearings officer or Planning Commission shall be de novo. And so, it is in our code as a de novo hearing through that reference, which is common in our code. Also, in state law, in 215416, there's a requirement that the Planning Director can make the initial decision, but the first hearing that arises out of that decision has to be a de novo hearing. So, that, our code is consistent with the requirements in state law. Whether there's discussions that go way beyond me about what does it mean to be de novo, that's something else that the applicant, so representative, could bring up.
Well, it'd be an interesting discussion for us to have, I think, but not every county uses a hearings officer like we do in Marion County. A number of counties, it goes just to the Board of Commissioners, right, and that would be the hearing, so learn more all the time. That's my only question.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we do accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing with a date suggested of January 18, 2017.
Second motion?
Your motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Scheduled for the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Thanks for the good work you do over there. Okay. I guess we'll read the calendar. Still short. Well, I'll just announce the tour, yeah.
Is it Wood Park Terrace?
Okay, so, we just completed our board session, which is on here. On the second Monday, offices are closed and observance of the New Year's Day holiday. And on the third, which is Tuesday at 9:00 a.m., Marion County swearing-in ceremony here at the Senator Hearing Room on the first floor, right in this office. One of us gets, you get sworn in, right? Congratulations.
I don't know what happened.
Yeah. On Tuesday, the third, at 1:30, we have Capitol Community Television CCTV taping. Do we have that as well today?
No.
Oh, I guess it just didn't drop off my schedule, got rescheduled. Okay, and then on the fourth, Wednesday, we're back here at 9:00 a.m. for a board session with a new powerful Chair. And on Wednesday, the fourth, at 12 o'clock, we're in Woodburn for our Marion County meeting with the Woodburn leadership at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street. And right after that, at 1 o'clock, we are, we will be touring Wood Park Terrace. I'm not sure what the address is, but it'll be posted up on our website. Somebody wants to join us on that with Marion County Housing Authority and other leaders from the area. Anything else you want to say about the calendar?
Just to mention that in particular, it's a project where we've had a lot of trouble, balconies that weren't holding up and doing some extensive remodeling. I thought it'd be a great opportunity to take a look, as they're, they're supposed to be about halfway through, so.
And I think I was, I think I dropped the ball on that in the meeting yesterday. I think I said I would mention it to Sarah to get it on our schedule and to email that out to the Woodburn people that are offering that tour.
Maybe it's time for a change.
New Chair would have, would have made that, made that happen, so we'll, I'm sure staff will make it happen, because I did not.
Mr. You got anything for us?
Yeah. So, okay. And any comments on pay raises for elected officials?
Nope.
You know, there were a lot of things going through my head when, when he was talking. I think it's important for people to understand, and we go through this during the budget process, but there's a lot of talk during budget process. We have a Compensation Board. It is made up of very highly skilled HR personnel, people with expertise in personnel and human resources matters. They actually do look at other counties. We had a very large study that we did a couple of years ago now, and we, at the advice of a consultant, decided to go with seven counties that we looked at that were comparator counties, and I think we ran into, you know, in both realms of it, the elected official side and the, just the general pay scales that we have for our appointed employees, some issues with using the seven counties. There were smaller counties like Benton and Polk and others that did skew, I think, salaries down a little bit, and so the Board, somewhat recently, I think it's within the last few months, made a decision, gave direction to go back to the four comparator counties that are also used through the ERB, what does ERB stand for, Employee Relations Board hearings that we had for the strike-prohibited unions, and those are Clackamas, Lane, Dechutes, and Jackson. So, Clackamas County is a larger county than Marion County. Lane County is almost as close to identical as you can get in terms of size and population and the way it's laid out. Jackson is a little bit smaller, but they tend to pay sometimes more than Marion County just because of the way that their budget's created with timber dollars and so on. And then Dechutes, which also is not a county that pays its employees much lower, I think, than Marion County does. So, I think that's going to help even things out in the future for elected officials, but the Board does not make the decision on those salaries. It is the Compensation Board that, well, the Board makes the final decision, but it's based on the Compensation Board's recommendation. So, that was what was going through my head.
Mr. Chair, I think it's also important for folks to understand that we are a general law county, which means we have to follow state law, and we're required to have that Compensation Board. And the Compensation Board is made up of folks that are not county employees. So, I think it's, we're not just doing this willy-nilly. We're doing it, following the law and following the recommendations of that comp board of people who are from the private sector and, and other governments, so.
Well, and can I just add one more thing, too? They don't just look at salary either. They look at the full gamut of benefits, whether the county picks up PERS or not, whether a person gets a travel allowance or not. I mean, we don't do that in Marion County, but in some other counties, they do that. So, it's, it's really looking at the entire array, retirement, 401K, those types of things that the position gets. So, in some instances, Marion County's salaries have been maybe a bit lower, but not, not really low, but what I'm saying, you know, in the, in the, in the middle, but maybe just shy of middle, but that's because we have a pretty generous benefit package, too, in Marion County, and all of that is taken into consideration.
Well, thank you for that. I do want to say that this, I think some of the comments that were made about the election cycle and that we can be thankful that we had a good, very fair election... cycle and that we can be thankful that we had a good, very fair election, and our clerk's office did a great job, so, like other departments in Marion County, we're blessed to have that, so.
Just because I'm thinking, and the discussion reminded me, we've lost a budget committee member, Farin Taylor, so we'll be looking for somebody, and I thought it'd be a good opportunity to say it out loud here on TV that...
I hadn't heard that one.
First of all, we appreciate his efforts very much and that he'll be missed, but we really need to find somebody that has that ability and interest to help us through that budget process.
He's moving out, he and his wife are preparing to move out of the area, I think, is what it said, so.
I just thought maybe he didn't like your chairmanship or something.
Yeah, well, you could call him and say, hey, it's...
Yeah, it's a better new deal now.
Speaking of which, you know...
I can't help it.
You just can't wait, you just can't wait to take over. I mean, he's already signing above my name as chair, so, it's like, oh, no, this has been a great year. It's been fun, and we've got some challenges ahead of us that I think we'll be able to maneuver through. I just really appreciate, here's what I appreciate, John, and this is led by you as well as the elected leaders in this county, of looking way out into the future and not just, as I was, as I experienced in another former elected body that I served in, it was all about every two years and what can I get? And people weren't looking about what's coming down two years, four years. I think one of the great things is having a four-year contract was good, you know, we, we've got a lot of challenges looking out for us, looking out into the horizon of how we are going to remain competitive and provide all the services that the people of Marion County expect. And I just want to thank your leadership this year and in years past to continue to put us in a very good fiscal position that we are all thankful to be in, and not all counties, and our brothers and sisters in other counties in this state. We need to help them as much as we can, especially in, Sam, you're serving on all those timber areas that, to help them, because they, they're, they're ready to go upside down in many places, can't keep their jails.
There's little talks of perhaps some dollars coming.
Yeah. So, we can help wherever we can over in the legislature and on a federal basis to say we're all in this together.
Kind of off subject, one of the things that I'm pretty proud of, and you've been a big part of, and Commissioner Carlson, too, is that I think we really addressed facilities here this last year and the coming year, and when we leave it, we've taken what would have been huge problems for somebody to deal with and addressed them when it was, and John, you get a big credit for this, too, when we get done, but addressed them within funds available, so can't be too much better.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important, when you do have extra money, to not necessarily increase ongoing costs, but spend those dollars on one-time needs that you have. And we knew we had tremendous needs for our infrastructure, primarily because we really couldn't do much during the recession, and now we're fixing that infrastructure. It'll be good for our constituents and good for our employees, and we'll be able to serve people in a better way.
This is way off the subject, and probably isn't even valid or truthful, but I saw, I think it was on Facebook, 10 most dangerous cities in Oregon. Everybody see that?
No.
It was kind of interesting, so I...
If it was on Facebook, I'm sure it's true.
Well, it has to be accurate, but you would expect Eugene and Portland, but Medford was like number one. Could that be possible? But if it was, it would, this timber part would be part of that issue. Have you ever heard anything about particular troubles there? I just don't picture Medford as a problem.
Right.
All right, fine. Wasn't valid.
Yeah, I don't know how, you know, I know Josephine County's really struggling with enforcement issues because of their lack of...
Well, the May Close or Jails, the last time.
Right, Sheriff, and I don't know how much that bleeds into what's going on with Jackson County now, because I'm thinking they're going to have to pick up some of the slack for the adjoining county, right?
I would think so.
Yeah, so, just a guess, I have no idea.
Well, I want you to check its validity for it. But Eugene was valid, I knew that belonged.
Was Eugene in there?
Oh, sure.
Was Corvallis in there?
No.
Oh, okay.
Oh, my goodness.
No, that was, that was two football coaches ago. Corvallis was in there when Dennis Erickson was the football coach.
No, not, he was a good guy, no kidding.
But that's when they were having all the, right after he left.
It was Greg Thorpe and Petty Bonehead.
Okay, okay. Now, we will, and the one thing is, I probably won't hear this gavel for another year or two, so we are, we are going to adjourn our meeting today and our last meeting of the 2016 calendar year. We are adjourned.